Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular board meeting of Dundee Township for October 2025. I call this meeting in order at 7:04 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Jay.
Present.
Trustee Drake.
Here.
Trustee Fixler.
Here.
Trustee Harvey.
Here.
Supervisor Shaw.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. I ask you all, Rice and President Adler, if you can please lead us with the pleasure of allegiance.
Bledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next portion of our meeting will be public comment. We ask that you come forward, state your name, and limit your comment up to three minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to address?
Chief Urge Jay.
Hello, everybody. I'm George Johnson, resident of Dundee Township for over 50 years, actuarian, and formerly sat very often in about eight years as trustee. And say that just to indicate that I do understand some of the problems and challenges that you face, not all of them. Tonight, my purpose is to talk on behalf of friends of Dundee Natural Areas. You know, we're in the open. We are very excited about what's going on with what we call FDNA. And we hope we can get you excited too, considering using this three-minute slot. Whoop, can you move that one up? There we go. Thank you. Just as a quick refresher, FDNA is a nonprofit fund. It was over two years ago. The purpose is one by organizations, a nonprofit, one by a bunch of open space owners who saw a challenge, was a perceived shortfall in township resources for open space. We saw that as a major obstacle because winning the battle against invasive species is a war. There's no other way to describe it. It's a war. And sometimes it's hard to tell if you're winning or losing. You go out, you cut brush, you stack it up, and you burn it, and you poison it, and you turn around and look behind you, and it's already started to regrow. It's not all over. We think it's an important thing to do. And bringing up that budget issue is not a criticism. Believe me, like I said, I was a trustee most years. We didn't know where the money was coming from in open space. We stayed here sometimes till after midnight trying to make a budget balance. And through all that, it really wasn't a good option to look at that. So we saw FDNA as a challenge to find a non-taxpayer way of funding open space. That's an important term to remember. And based on that, we designed a kind of an experimental business model. Designed to tap into the generosity of the community, charitable donations. And yeah, there was some uncertainty about whether that would actually work or not. But the scale of the success is part of the good news I want to convey. If you look at that first slide, it's not good for you to read the whole thing and squint at it because it's a representation of a treasury statement for the end of this, for the end of, middle of October. And what it's showing is that as of now, over the last two years and a few months, $104,000 has been collected in donations, non-taxpaying money, from residents who obviously love open spaces much as we do. Of that, roughly $49,000 has been spent. That's the, oops, disappeared. Second column from the right shows what was spent. Almost all of it's on Dundee Township so far.
Mr. Johnson, you have 30 more seconds.
Pardon me?
30 more seconds. Your time has already been up.
No. Okay, well.
Sorry.
We have, the point being that we have about $60,000, $60-some thousand dollars available to support open space. Now move quickly to the west side because my time is up. See that big dark patch in the middle? That is what we call the Buckhorn Jungle. It's over in Dixie Preserve, Nature Preserve, far southwest corner off Winfield Drive, a street called Eastmore. And it is awful. It's disgusting. It's all buckhorn and pine scaly. It's been there for 50 years. There's no way that the visitors were approaching because it's just too big a project to handle. And now that FDNA has come up with some money, we've started attacking it. And it really is a, it's a lot.
We need to bring time, as I mentioned, to come back.
You can, that machine you see picked up there is a brush hog. It's a machine that chows right into the brush. It turns together the fine powdered mulch like we use in the garden. This previous, it says April, but it's actually March. We started this project and spent $11,500, $11,500, non-taxpaying dollars. And we've now secured grants for another $22,000, thanks to the work of one of our members, Sue Bennett. And we, we hope to get the green light to go ahead and restart this project this year. And there's a reserve fund attached to it. And if 22 is not enough, so that's what is a perfect fit between the township and FDNA. That's about it. Thank you for your opportunity. Time is out at home and a few minutes must have lost count now. But thanks, and we hope to be able to hear you in a month for three minutes.
You can, you can do a presentation, Mr. Johnson. Just let me know. Just let me know. I'll put you on the agenda for our presentation. Yeah. Then you get 15 minutes.
We don't want to make your meetings longer than they usually do.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ted Gray.
Well, he's got a presentation.
Oh, he's, no, he's got a presentation. Yeah.
Unless he wants to give public commentary.
No, no, no. He has a presentation. Yeah.
Mark Avalar.
Good evening. Mark Avalar, I'm down in Illinois. I'm only a 31-year resident. I'm with George, and it's certainly a pleasure to speak with all the else tonight. This is a time of transition for the mental health board. As two members are likely not to be back, I would already announce that I will not pursue a second four-year term. And so there's also going to be a change of leadership. And believe me, the mental health board is in great hands with Sue Carney as the next president of the board starting in January. One thing I want to bring up though is, and I've had this discussion with the past two township boards, as far as allowing the community members who are interested and want to at least apply for the mental health board to be considered for appointment, is the township to take an active, proactive role in soliciting resumes and letters of interest, and more letters of interest. Additionally, last month, as trustee Harvey brought it during her presentation, state law has changed concerning allowing the mental health board to have an advice component, provided that the mental health board approves this in its rules, which we did back in 2018. So given the time, we're now in mid-October. The appointments are generally made at the December meeting. We're looking forward to reading at the mental health board all the applications of the interested residents of this township who want to serve on the mental health board. And maybe you all may know, our state representative Suzanne Massey is the one who spearheaded greater transparency in the appointment process. And as one of my last actions will be, as the president of the board, is to ensure that we set the standard before vetting and discussing the qualifications of all the candidates. The thumb is not going to be waited for one candidate or the other. It's going to be a thorough process. But we definitely have asked the cooperation of the supervisor and trustees, please begin openly to direct into the community, soliciting for applications and more resumes. The qualifications for mental health board are set down in the statutes. And those will be the qualifications that we, as a mental health board, will review once we bring some advice in, either both next month and at our December meeting. So please, cooperation, let's let it know to the residents that you have a passion, the drive, and qualifications to represent this township on the Dundee Township Mental Health Board. Now's the time to be thinking about it. Now's the time to be preparing your letters and your resumes. Now's the time to be turning this in to supervisor Shaw. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Courtney Bo. Thank you. Sorry, it's been quite a busy day, so it's all in my phone. Thank you, Supervisor Shaw, board of trustees, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Courtney Bo. I'm speaking as a resident tonight, not as any official capacity. I'm here to address the board regarding the crucial issue of open spaces and the need for both accountability and deference as you consider future governance of that organism that's built under umbrella. I've been working with open spaces for about two years now, and I have come to deeply appreciate the commitment of trustees such as Sue Carney, as well as volunteers, June Keebler, Carol Weinheimer, Hammer, Suzanne Massey, Sue Keebler. George, thank you, George, and many others involved in Dundee Township Open Spaces and the Friends of Dundee's Natural Areas. These dedicated individuals have been true stewards of their green areas, often for multiple decades. Their strong feelings about how open spaces are maintained and organized stem not from unilateral control, but from having held their reins and preserving these spaces for a few others over the past decades. I understand that past administrations may not have maintained the most robust records nor future planning for open spaces. And I agree that proper financial trails need to be established. Sorry, this is very. Proper trails need to be established, sorry. And accountability and clear goals yield better results. Accountability is essential. However, I caution the board, as you, as you pursue these ends, do not presume selfish intent on the part of the volunteers. Those contributing their time and passion to the work in the fields are not the ones responsible for the past bookkeeping. Rather, let us ensure that the pursuit of transparency does not become an adversarial process. The effectiveness of our open spaces program will depend on how you integrate its established leadership and membership into the volunteer membership that is already established. I encourage you to include significant membership from those who are actively working in the fields from perspective, as I mentioned before, Carol Weinheimer, George, June Keebler, Steve Keebler, Sue Bennett. Their expertise is irreplaceable. Furthermore, for the board's trustee liaison position to the open spaces or the advisory committee, I highly recommend that you nominate Charity Drake. She's been out there on a regular basis, not only in seed collection, but as well as the workdays. And she knows the members that are participating and the schedules that they keep. And in past board meetings, I've noticed that she's paid strong attention to the financial needs of the township. Let us ensure that our governance structure supports, uplifts, and properly integrates those who are working and those who want to oversee so we can come to a bridge between the two actions. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the board at this time? Okay. I will close the meeting. If there's nobody else who wants to address the board, I'll close this part of the meeting. This evening, our first presentation is from Domenico Dal Sandra. So who's going to present it? Can we just watch it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's Ted Gray's, though, isn't it?
No, he's first.
Is there two or is it just the one?
Two. It's Domenico's. Yeah, and then Ted's.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the first base of the Winkreets' concept plan. The concept plans were fully funded by the Friends of Dundee Natural Areas. It is essential to protect and responsibly manage water resources to ensure our home well-being. The purpose of this presentation is to seek approval and support for submitting a proposal for the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity, which are due on November 5. The proposal aligns with green infrastructure and best management practices aimed at preventing, eliminating, or reducing small water runoff into Illinois river streams and lakes. This is the final cycle in which this grant will be available. The application will request the minimum grant award of $75,000. As this is a reimbursement grant, the applicant must fund initial project expenditures, and reimbursement will occur after the project's completion. The upfront cost, therefore, serves as a temporary loan. 25% of the project costs are to be covered by the grant team. For a $75,000 grant, this portion is $18,500. This amount may include iconic services offered by project partners and volunteers. The grant does not provide reimbursement for equipment purchases, overhead, or administrative expenses. The objective of this project is to mitigate further erosion on slopes that, in areas, exceed 20 feet in height, which currently threatens of downstream private properties. These images illustrate the creek's variable behavior with pronounced fluctuations during storm events and droughts, conditions that are increasingly severe and unpredictable due to climate change. Numerous invasive, non-native plant species have established themselves in the base of the ravines, contributing to erosion-prone environments. Accordingly, these areas will necessitate comprehensive restoration initiatives to reintroduce native riparian vegetation and ensure long-term stabilization and balance of the creek bed. Prior to initiating any downstream work, it is essential to first address the upper reaches of the creek runoff origins. The 1939 aerial photograph above indicates that the existing creek bed was limited to the wooded areas outlined in red. The northwestern branch appeared as a broad pathway rather than a significantly eroded channel at that time. This indicates that runoff was effectively managed by a sequence of shallow depressions within the fields, which retained stormwater as natural ephemeral ponds. These depressions can be identified by the darker regions present even after the fields have been cultivated. By 1963, however, a distinctly deep stream bed had formed, likely due to the installation of drainage tiles in the surrounding fields, which concentrated flows into a single channel. In both images, note the open savanna ecosystem marked by the yellow line. In this slide, the yellow line marks the current creek bed. Blue solid lines indicate depressions, while blue dashed lines show major bellies affected by erosion. The upper cotton creek area is split into pre-proposed project phases, targeting runoff origins with the greatest impact. The dashed blue lines demarcate the major bellies, which themselves continue to erode, while the red circles demarcate where the head cuts are most active. The contours are at one foot elevation, and the silhouette of a person shows the scale of the eroded areas. To mitigate excessive runoff during storm events, a series of ponds is proposed as strategically selected locations informed by the site's existing topography. These features will function as ephemeral ponds following significant storm activity. For this grant application, our focus is limited to establishing these ponded areas. The addition of step pools within the eroded creek bed will be considered at a later stage, pending the collection and analysis of data regarding the effectiveness of the newly created ponds. The Kane County soil map reveals numerous rills created by runoff that contribute to ongoing erosion. Also note the ephemeral ponds at the top center and bottom right. Our focus is on the eastern watershed, where soils are moderately well-drained and slopes range from 0 to 12%. The number and depth of ponds on this site will dictate how much runoff is captured. Since large deep ponds are not desired, dry wells may be added as needed to manage stormwater. To accurately assess the required dimensions for ponded areas and evaluate the necessity for dry wells, it is essential to conduct a series of percolation grade tests. Standard practice involves excavating a hole to the intended depth for the ponded area, followed by the creation of a smaller test hole that is filled with water. The absorption rate is then measured, typically at one inch per minute, to determine soil for reability. Dry wells consist of perforated concrete pipes positioned vertically in the ground, lined with gravel and specified geotextiles, and covered with a manhole for maintenance access. Their dimensions are based on the intended runoff volume. Water is gradually discharged into the surrounding soil according to its natural percolation rate. In regions susceptible to heavy erosion, soil stabilization methods such as pleximat or similar products may be employed, enabling vegetation to be established within the geo grid structure. Pleximat features a fire-resistant geo grid, facilitating the safe implementation of controlled burns. This may pertain more to the areas with deep erosion cuts, such as when constructing step pools further along downstream. The Dundee Township Board of Trustees is being requested to approve an application for the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity Program, and to raise $75,000 in partnership with collaborators to fulfill the grant requirements. This money is spent only if this grant is awarded and to be sent in 5% refunded after completion of the proposed project. To summarize, addressing headwater runoff is essential due to its influence along the entire creek. If headcutting erosion is not managed, downstream restoration efforts will be compromised in the long term. We need to significantly reduce runoff and limit sediment delivery to the Fox River, improving the health of the river and its riparian corridor. These actions are consistent with the ongoing objectives of the junky creek watershed plan. Furthermore, the growing vulnerability to building of extreme weather events associated with climate change underscores the importance of recharging our aquifers, safeguarding access to clean groundwater for residents. Proposed developments will further impact already stressed shallow aquifers, which provide drinking water for the community. For all these reasons, we urge the Dundee Township Board of Trustees and the administration to support the application for the GIGO grid. Thank you for your time and consideration.
So we won't be able to ask questions, but we'll close, we'll move on to the next presentation. Mr. Gray, thank you for being with us today from Living Waters Consultants. You have the floor, sir.
Could you be here for us? We should have came to talk about Shaw Creek. And the folks in this room are pretty familiar with Shaw Creek and the products and services out there that we have. So I'm going to look pretty quickly through the first few slides and then, and spend a little more time on the last few slides. So in terms of company experience, I'm an engineer with Living Waters Consultants, has some background in ecology and water resources. We provide services for stream link and wetland management and restoration. We've had the pleasure of working with Dundee Township for some time, over 15 years, and assisted a few different projects. And with Sue's help and most of the folks that are very ingenious and integrated and involved in the volunteer stewardship for these important groups. I'll also say just an upfront comment in regards to open space comments. Dundee Township just has some, you know, we work a lot throughout the region. Dundee Township does definitely have some unique resources that aren't found in all parts of the six-county and larger northwestern region. So it's really exciting that you have a sharp interpretation taking care of these important areas. So in addition to stream link and wetland management restoration, we provide stormwater engineering. One of the components for the Shaw Creek project is the grant application as well. We provide those types of services. Yes, that's why. So for services, engineering plans, permitting, bidding services are all part of routine projects. You can imagine all those types of services are required with prior implementation. So we provide like engineering consulting help, and a lot of times these projects are going to bid out to contractors that will provide the earth moving, graving, and excavation effort that's needed for the construction. The project benefits. So in general, we try to convert degraded systems into community assets. And that certainly applies to Shaw Creek, as you'll see. The approach we like to use is a team-oriented approach. You know, we haven't worked very long with you here, so looking forward to establishing that same new relationship we have with the township. We certainly cost-effective, innovative, long-term solutions are all important. And for these types of environments that we have in Dundee Township through Shaw Creek and running itself, solutions are really important. We've been fortunate to have been awarded a variety of awards from peer groups and local groups and state and national organizations. Hope that Shaw Creek may one day become potentially, you know, that fall into that category. It remains to be determined, but we do our best. So the project area, we have Sleepy Hollow Road, most of our roads on the west side of the park there. Way to Swain Woods Lake is on the west side of Sleepy Hollow Road. You can see areas in yellow highlighted in Shaw Creek. And we are intentionally omitting the private, private, the open parcel that's toward the downstream end there that is not encapsulated by the highlighted yellow areas. So the project spans all of the publicly owned space in the research area. So the creek reach is 1,700 feet length. So it's a large section that we're working on in Shaw Creek. Over three-quarters of the square mile ran into the project site. So a lot of issues to contend with. We already heard about the climate change and the changes in flashy hikrology and this site has been impacted by that over the years as well. It's also very steeply sloped, stream segments on average over 2% gradient, which for northeast Illinois is quite steep. And this exhibit just shows the topography and then shows Fox River to the east. So the stream eventually flows through Raisberg Woods downstream into Fox River. So looking at some of the existing issues, this is from Sleepy Hollow Road looking downstream. The, the stream channel, the segment, if you will, on the left side of the slide was the intended original flow path, the stream channel in the white arrow. The yellow arrow to the right appears to be a new stream channel carved out, eroded, you know, highly, highly eroded new channel formed around a past stabilization, stabilization structure. So unfortunately, we're getting these types of dynamics happening in Shaw Creek. So the large new area up to eight feet in height, banks approximately five to 10 feet in width that are part of the new channels in Shaw Creek. So that's one example of the problem. It's funny. Yeah, you can go back, actually, go back two if you would. And this just shows, and the yellow arrow shows the main stone of the stream channel on the right side. It's just a scourred-out stream bank in probably 12 to 14 feet in width. Some of this is caused by fallen trees and debris jams. Some of this is caused by fallen trees and debris jams and other issues. There are highly eroded soils on Shaw Creek, which does not help. So that in combination with the steep slope and the flashy hydrology has all combined to impact what really is a high-quality natural area. So the next slide shows one of the past stabilization practices. So there was an effort almost twenty years ago to provide some stabilization in Shaw Creek. Our goal with this current project is to make as much use of the past stabilization efforts as we can with the new proposed efforts. And part of that is, you know, so the problem with this particular condition that we're looking at, we're looking downstream, is the flow has rotted around the past stone structures and carved out the new stream, stream channel to the left side of those structures. Then the flow bounces back to the right bank and hits the trees along the right side of the slope. So some of these stone structures are large enough to be reused and contemplated to be incorporated into what we call more comprehensive grade control structures. So we're not planning on duplicating any stretch of what was done before, but we look to incorporate that material and incorporate it into a riff, block roofed or grade control structure, for example, which is more of a comprehensive way to protect the channel from downcutting and prevent these channels from scouring or around these structures. One of the key areas of design concern for grade control is potential scouring of structures. That's something I pay attention to. So the next slide would show some of the examples of just trees that have lost at the site. So a lot of mature oak trees and other species. To be as simple as possible, we'll try to protect the trees and consider the resources at the project site. It's going to be challenging, but we want to do our best and at the positive side, we do have a lot of space and room to work with at the project site. But now I want to get to the slides that are involved and more of the nuts and bolts. So you can show the next slide of, we're planning to do just a brief snapshot or overview of what Shaw Creek in the best of circumstances might look like post-construction. These conditions can take several years to get established, especially with the installation of native plant species, which some of my guests know as much or more about that as I do. They take, you know, at least a few years to get established. But this is the nuts and bolts of the final engineering plans that have been completed. And we've also completed the draft grant application. We're looking at thirty-one hundred feet of stabilization, thirteen grade control structures, several riffles included in that mix, with two acres of native plant seeding. So benefits would be recreational improvement enhancements, protection of the resources in these banks that are currently eroding at the site. Tree protection, some of the unique oak trees at the site. Infrastructure protection, including a culvert under Sleepy Hollow Road. There is also a culvert downstream at a private gravel road. The next slide, I'm running out of time by the way, there's only a little, a whole team, a few minutes left, but. So for the grant application, based on the final engineering plans, we have total costs for construction estimated at just under four hundred thousand dollars, as you see in the top. And then the engineering services for the remaining work at forty-nine thousand five hundred. So that, that includes everything else with engineering, permitting, bidding, construction fees, engineering, grant administration as well. So the total estimated cost, and keep in mind, this is estimated out, you know, at a point in the future when the grant could be awarded. Looking at approximately four hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. With the grant breakdown, we're applying to Illinois EPA for the Section 319 grant, which has been awarded on other projects in Dundee Township. That has a sixty percent frame composition, forty percent local match. So the township would be responsible for the forty percent section. So the grant would potentially be two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. The local match at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is the cost breakdown. One thing I will say on the local match of forty percent is that there are potentially other grants, as long as they're non-federal source grants, that could also be applied towards the forty percent township man. So for example, if there's a county grant or if for some reason a state grant comes online that we're aware of, but there are some, you know, definite county opportunities that could be available, could be applicable for this project. So, you know, potentially that could offset, so. Yeah, the next slide, the last major slide is schedule, so there's some time associated with this. So the grant application, we completed the correct grant application we talked about. The grant application is not due until next year, so we're estimating that might be summer of next year. After the application is submitted, estimating a few months for Illinois EPA review. If the contract gets approved for a grant, it typically allows about two years for project implementation. So it's a pretty compressed schedule between permitting and bidding and construction. A lot of ground needs to be covered in two years, but that's the typical schedule that's allowed for that level of this opportunity. Other important, two, two other details, or one other detail I've probably got is that only expenses after the grant contract date can count towards local match with Dundee Township. So if you were to go through future insurance processes or if you were to go through one of the expenses in the project that are kind of initial or upfront expenses, only those expenses after the grant date can be counted towards the township handling. So just want to be mindful of that as hopefully working grantee in the market. And it's probably bears repeating, I'll just mention again. Only non-federal grants can be offset to a level that's, that's, or, so on water transportation, which is a non-federal source. That's, that's it. Any questions or comments?
Just a question, because the air came on. Can you explain again the only expenses after?
I couldn't hear it very well, sorry. Only expenses, so if a grant is awarded by Illinois EPA, there's a contract for that grant and there's a date for that contract. So for our discussion purposes, that might not occur until fall or maybe winter of twenty twenty-six. So only expenses after that grant contract date are eligible to be, to count towards the township's local share of forty percent.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why can't they, that be converted into a wetland mitigation bank?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we are looking actually to enhance wetlands on the project site. But the main reason is because of the steep slope. The stream slope is two point three percent. Wetlands usually have a much, much flatter slope than that is considered. So between the really high stream slope, as well as the really tall banks at the project site, in order to construct wetland and then repairing area, it would require a lot of, a lot more work, a lot more cost for excavation and cost for rate control. So there may be more opportunity, I think, for wetland enhancement, wetland banking just downstream of this project site potentially. That would have to be evaluated, but I do understand the value of wetland banking and where it, where it lies. But this project would be really difficult to accomplish that just because of these system conditions.
And then once we sort this out, in the future, how do we know this four hundred and forty-six thousand will be it? I mean, I understand you already said that there could be more costs as we go.
Yeah, and so you had talked about, we've pumped up the cost by about ten percent and that's reflected in this slide. And, you know, the bottom lines, we've got no guarantee of those costs. It's, it's a process whereby a bid out, you know, publicly bid typically to contractors. So a lot of those cost estimates are just based on best experience, as well as based on the scope of work that we have. So it's our, it's a quality engineer's opinion and proper cost for recent, so it's not a guaranteed cost. So I, I would say that it's, it's our best estimate of what we are anticipating to encounter. And we are, we are not expecting that all the bids would be at that cost level. But, you know, we, we would hope to see at least one bid from a contractor that would come in and add or clear that.
Will that fix the problem?
The other thing I've mentioned too is there's a whole other process called value engineering, which in the bidding process, we include a lot of options and alternates in the bid list that the contractors bid on. And that provides us with the benefit of evaluating where their base bid costs are, as well as our, our potential options and what their cost estimates are for those options. And so part of the, part of the benefit of that is that there is opportunity there to reevaluate after the bids come in, what makes for the best project. And that's just, again, called, called the balance engineering and there's other names for that. But that's part of making that budget the best fit for the grant requirements as well as the project site.
Will that fix the erosion though?
So that's, the plan is to resolve the bulk of the erosion at Shaw Creek. It does not mean that there will never be any other erosion in their areas. This is not, it's not a structural project or it's a natural area. Recognize that stream channels also have their own sets of dynamics, you know, especially in natural areas. So we're trying to preserve the natural character of the site, but to restore some of the historic hydrology and historic, if you will, energy balance in the stream channel. Because right now, the channel has vertically downcut, it's steepened in slope quite a bit. And also the bank heights have expanded quite a bit as the channel is now, as erosion is considered. So we're, we're trying to restore all the balance in the stream management level, bank slope conditions. And part of that is with grade control structures, we can effectively reduce the channel slope in between structural locations. So this is going to go the wrong way. I will say this, that, you know, this plan is to make every effort that, you know, we're not going to have failures with the installed structures in terms of what's been put, is proposed to be installed. And taking into account of just some past site alterations, all that is factored into the final engineering plans.
So we would need a maintenance plan thereafter?
Yeah, any, any natural area, we always recommend and highly recommend native plant maintenance. And that's important to get the native plants established. And that takes three, sometimes five years to get that established and phase. And then the maintenance is important, and I think that's already been done in some respects out at, out in the vicinity. I know that there's been a lot of basic brush clearing work mentioned as well. There's been a lot of that work done at Shaw Creek in, in this project area, which, which also you can see some of that in the slides as well. But yeah, the long-term maintenance, I will also add for the grants, Illinois EPA 319 grant requires ten years of site stewardship as part of the grant. So there's that requirement for native plant maintenance that is already being jeopardized by MTA and others.
So we don't ideally know if we invested four fifty, we don't know what's, where do you cap off at?
You mean the cost, the destruction cost?
Yeah, and maintenance for ten years? Can we project that? It's hard to do that, right?
Well, so I think there's some maintenance being conducted at the site already. But typically the contractor is on the hook for native plant maintenance for three years. And that's part of permitting situation as well. And for the grant program, we like to try to include at least one year of native plant maintenance included in the grant funding. Doesn't mean that, you know, the subsequent years are being included in the grant because of the timeline at all. But yeah, there's, there's an onboard of the native plant maintenance, but this will be, this project will be a substantial enhancement for the project site, I'd say.
Understood, that's all for me. Anyone else has questions?
I have one other question. Just curious about the private land section in between. How do you, how can you account for the, how much disruption would that cause in the system between the end of, I guess what I would call the top side and the lower side?
Disruption, you mean during construction?
Well, more like, you know, it has its channels, it's not getting upgraded. And will the water be flowing faster through there because it's not slowed down, it's not, I don't have the words.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand. That's a good question. And so ideally we would like to, you know, include the private area, but of course, that's not part of the project. So it's a, it's a fairly small stretch of stream channel. I don't have the exact length, I think it's two hundred and fifty feet. So with the work that we're doing in the upstream end and the work in the downstream end, in the downstream, that downstream smaller piece does include some grade control measures as well. So, and those structures provide benefits not only for where they're installed, but also for upstream areas and downstream areas. So there is going to be some carryover effect from the rest of the project. They're, they're going to benefit in some respects in the private land, even though nothing's been done there. But in terms of.
Across the board, it's a win for them also.
It would be, it, it should be considerable win, I would say, in terms of the stream and that's a good part of it.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. We will move on to the next item of the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Reports, we will start with, Trustee Harney, do you have any reports for mental health board?
Yes.
Followed by association.
Yes. Yeah, the mental health board met last week and we are in the process. We have a interim administrative person, Katie Beegan-Holt, I believe is her name. And she, she's an interim administrative coordinator. We have her on a contract with a professional organization to, for a three-month contract, but we do, we complete our search for a permanent, a permanent replacement as an administrative coordinator. She comes from the corporate world, I've worked with her a little bit. She's been on the job for a couple of weeks now and I think that, you know, she's getting her feet underneath her and getting things done. The transition with her and Jared has gone smoothly. And the last board meeting, we had good reports and, and it was easy to follow through on things. The last board meeting, we awarded a total of, let's see.
Okay, so the meeting is back to order at nine oh two PM. And Madam Clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Dre.
Yes.
Trustee Dre, here. Trustee Fixmer.
Present.
Trustee Harney, here. Supervisor Shaw.
Yes. I love it. This is a breeze, diversity is a good thing.
So tired.
Okay, so I'm forgot, I forgot.
So, so call in, back to order.
We did call it back, we did the old call.
And then you can get other business.
Yes, so other business, I do have one bit that, last Friday, actually, towards the end of the day, I believe. I'm not sure if Maria has that email in here, but nevertheless, Nathan Allen, I think you know who that is, from MT, I believe?
Oh, yeah, Nick.
Yeah, like, yes, so he sent us an opportunity for twenty thousand dollar grant for the cemetery. So, but in order for us to apply, we need to be able to say. So, but in order for us to apply, we need to be able to say that the town will front the money. So that is what we're going to do. So if, you know, if everybody is okay with it, it is within my powers. But I wanted to make sure you guys are all right with it. The problem is, we got it last Friday and the last day for the grant is, application is 24. How are we going to front, from the, so it would be, it would be $20,000 is not the match, that's the whole grant? Yeah. And what's it for in the cemetery? So equipment. So it's going to be, we have a Kubota, we have actually a couple of items that we could use it for. But let's just say for the sake of this call, or sorry, meeting, it's approximately $18,000. And it's been about 15 years old or so. What is it? So the Kubota. Oh, yes, we need to get, we need to replace that. Yeah, so it would be good for us to be able to leverage that money if we can get it. So if everybody's okay with it, or, and I should ask, does anybody have objections? Are we allowed to? No, we're not voting. We are just asking for an opinion. Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, an opinion. Yeah, so we should go ahead and try it there. Yeah, because we're not buying anything before and so... It, it just, it's a matter of raising the money in the accounts and everything. All right, sounds good then. Is there any other business for the good of the order? Yes, I am just, since we could not vote on the grant and the $75,000 grant is, the deadline is November 5th and that's before our meeting, I would like to propose that we meet for a special meeting sometime next week on a date that will work for all of us. And that we, that we talk about and vote on whether we want to apply for that grant. And it's the one that, that is in Domenico's presentation. The one that Ted talked about, we have time to talk about that and think about it and budget for it. But the Domenico one, we can manage, well, a big part of that, you know, all the volunteer hours that the volunteers put in, that's told, that's counted at like $34 an hour for each hour that they, that they donate. And so that's a chunk of change. And then you talk about the seed that they gather, that's another chunk of change. Worked to 75,000, you know, really pretty quick. And that, those, that, that grant specifically says that income matches are, are good. So I would like to have a meeting. We'd have to come up with a date. See, the only problem is, he was not here for questions. And when I have asked him a few questions about what would, would this project be it? Would that require, or would it set off another coinciding project that we would be doing? Is there a maintenance for it? He said, "All I'm proposing is just this $75,000 and I don't know about anything else." I'll get the answers for those questions if, at the next meeting. I think you can almost figure with grants that there's going to be maintenance over the long term. You know, and, and the maintenance isn't hard, but it's, it's what our staff and what volunteers already do. So that's the first thing. But the, the thing about what he's proposing is that it's a really interesting engineering concept of, they try a few things on a very low scale. And then they give it a season and see how it works. And then they readjust. And so, yeah, down, I mean, there's a lot more that needs to be done other than what the, what the $75,000... So we should have given the task force, which is the people, a chance to speak about this, a chance to ask on that. Well, the task force, the only main goal of the task force is strictly to look into everything that we want to do a little bit better by, by the law and see if it's feasible for the people. But they could not be able to do that before the deadline.
Yeah, we're running it.
No, but if we voted, that was the reason for that, right?
I second the special meeting. Just let's do it.
Well, so here's my question for you is, is what is the, what's the cost of applying for the grant?
$18,000, right? No, no, no. And that's what we're asking. Applying for the grant? Applying for the grant doesn't cost us anything.
No, $2,500.
Yeah, so you would make that a special meeting if you applied for it.
We don't. I don't think, I don't think there's any cost to apply for it.
Yeah, but you could still know.
Yeah, but, and that's the other thing. If it, if it turns out that we can't afford it, I think we're going to be able to. But if it turns out that we can't afford it, we can always go, gee, sorry, we can't afford. But, but no, there's no, what Nico wants to know though is, he's not good at public speaking. He's very uncomfortable doing it and that's why he did it this way. He's also a very stubborn, kind of an eccentric guy. But he has a really powerful background in landscape architecture and things like that. He's, he has a string of credentials behind his name. And so if he puts this together, it's going to take time and effort. And from his perspective, he does not want to do it if there's not a reasonably good commitment on the part of the board to go forward with it. Now, he also understands that if he comes up with something, it's $2 million, that the board, he can't afford that. You know, so that's not going to work. But this is, the grant, things are fairly small. What he's proposing for that phase one is fairly small. It amounts to essentially them going out and I think either public, either the roads department or pervy and guys can do it. They go dig lunch holes and see what the infiltration rate is. And they can measure it and it's, I mean, they go out for a day and do it. You know, or for six, six hours or whatever they do it. It's a slam dunk, it's easy. The people at FDNA, I could go out and do this, Charity and I could go out and do this. So that's a, that's a, you know, a low wall right there. The others are, you know, the design and he's capable of doing that. And what he'll do is he could, he'll work with, you know, probably in the working with Ted Gray or have Ted sign off on it or something like that. But those are all questions that we can answer and address at the meeting if, if we do this. Otherwise, you know, if everybody's comfortable with moving forward with this and thinks they will, let's jump on it because the November 5th deadline, that's, and that's a, it's a really good match for what we're doing. A really good match. And these opportunities don't come. There are other opportunities for a task force. And now we know, but, and, you know, speaking of task force, so probably what I want to know is who's going to be on it? How will the members be picked? You know, I, I, not to disparage your predecessor and Erin, Erin, who I ended up liking a great deal. But she wanted to do this with, at the beginning of her term. Except she wanted nobody on there who had anything to do with open space. She only wanted people who didn't like open space on there because she felt other people needed to have an input. Well, you know, the board buried that. They don't make the decision though, maybe it was. I'm sorry? The, the task force doesn't make decisions, they just make recommendations. But she was looking for cover to trash open space. And so, and so, and, and the board buried it. They, they just absolutely not. So I think, you know, those details of how this is going to work, yeah, I, you know, I think Charity would be a really good check person for it. She says no all the time, but we're going to talk her into it maybe. Or there are people out there. But Courtney would be a good, a good check person if she had time to do it and everything like this. But we need more structure and... No, it needs to be somebody from our board. Definitely. The other thing is, I think our board needs to do some strategic planning. And we need to set the parameters for this. What we need to do is say, we're going to have an open space task force. And here is where they're going to be advising us, you know? And it's where we want. The other thing we absolutely have to do is we have to get some site plans to plan. And, and this is what, you know, you may envision for the task, task force. But that's a professional job is a site planner. We need, we have site plans, one of the supervisors, we fulfill them, we did them, it's over with. We need new site plans. And what they do is, what are we going to do in the next year? What are we going to do in the next two years and on and on, up to a five-year plan. When I was with the Silverwood Districts and they did a lot of this kind of stuff, every year they had what they called an annual plan of work for every site that they were involved with. And they would say, it's going to be a John Jones Farm. We're going to do five irrigation ditches or whatever the heck it was. And then they parsed it out and quoted it, you know, every quarter, what's the report? How many irrigation ditches, what, that kind of thing. But doing it for open space is a professional job. We need to hire a company, we need a budget for it. They need to bring it to us. And at the same time, we need to meet as a board and say, answer those questions that you have. One of the things about the open space that we have that is, it has really strong boundaries about what can be done with it. In other words, anything, first of all, we have to meet the open space law, you know, parameters of how to use open space. And those have changed, but those parameters are there. If you're going to, you know, bond and buy land for open space, you know, there are things about it that you have, that you cannot do and things that you have to be, make available. The other thing is that, that a lot of it, except for two parcels, well, even more, like, like the, the nature preserves, the nature preserve buffer, those kinds, which is Dixie Bridge is a nature preserve and a buffer. Allan Woods is a nature preserve buffer. You can't do anything there without the nature. Well, that's what I mentioned, right, earlier today? You need to figure out, out of 1,000 acres, which is going to be conserved, preserved and restored. The thing, what I'm saying, Chivali, is we have no choice in that. That's not a choice anymore. No, but nobody can even tell you, nobody can give you a plan right now that states that these properties are under conservation. These are under restoration. Sit down, we don't tell you.
That's why, that's why you want to share the task force.
Exactly.
And I think, I could, I could maybe, maybe, a little, I think the idea is, hey, if we need those things, right, if we need a, a plan, that's something that a task force can say, right, hey, we need this, so let's do that to get it for...
That works for me.
Just that's the, it's a, it's a, and you, obviously, the trustees have, have not been to review the, the resolution because you were closed Monday. And so I think I got it out too late on Friday for it to go up, so that's, I'll take responsibility for that. But that's the idea in there and so take a look at it. But that's the, the idea to get guidance on those things. And that's why, I mean, obviously, even more than anybody I know about it. And that's why I think I, my suggestion when I was speaking with the supervisor.
And we've got a list for every property of what the boundaries are. You know, like I said, Dixie Bridge, there's nothing happening there.
And so that's, I think, so my idea was the task force, so I'll take responsibility.
Oh, that's fine.
But I think the idea is, I don't know if anybody has, for that, or wants to get a staff to do that. So you get volunteers, someone, a task force to come in and organize this and to get it so really low cost thing to get ideas.
And FDNA will do that in a minute. You know, they, they would be all on board with it. But what I wanted to see was, I just wondered, like I said, how are we, how is the appointment going to be made? How many people? What is their, what is the framework of what they're, we're asking them to do? And, and so they understand that they're advised. Because that's another thing that's long out before I've seen with things like this is, wait a minute, you told me, and I've seen this with planning commissions. You guys, we sat through, we did all this planning commission stuff and now you're not going to take our advice? We're done. So it gets, things get nasty.
And that's why I think they wanted you to share it.
You have all this knowledge and the infrastructure.
Well, you have a lot of input. I don't mean to put that on you, I'm sorry.
And, and I have to say that, that I think the 708 board is in a fragile state right now. And I think it won't be for a long time. But any more disruption, the changes of things is just really hard for them to tolerate. I would like to, I talked to Chivali earlier about this. I would like to give this maybe eight, 10 months or something on that border and see how the new people are working out. And I see how credentialed they are and, and how, you know, how, how they mix this with everybody. And then look at this again, because I didn't want to do this for a long time. But I cannot in good conscience walk away from it right now because we have a new interim director looking for a permanent, not director, a, a new interim administrator, looking for a permanent one. We've got two people leaving, two more people coming on. There's too much flux. And that has been the absolute, that has been so difficult with this 708 board that constantly there's change, there's new people coming in. They have to, you know, get their legs underneath them. No, no villains here, no bad people. Just that we need stability there right now. And that, that for me, I think is, is the most important thing. I think the open space part, other people can do it and I will chime in. I can take you to books in the back that show you the limits of the property. Because we did, we did a huge, in 2000, the year 2000, we did a massive community outreach with Kane County. Kane County Development Department ran the whole thing. We did two eight-hour days, one on this side of the river, one on the other side of the river. We had maps, we had court recorder, we had tape recorders, we did it online. We had almost 400 respondents and everything. And essentially it was, here's this open space site, here are the limits on it. You know, we can do this and we can't do those things. And then what would you like to do with suggestions? And so it's all written down and, and the results and everything. And interestingly enough, there was only one site that people wanted active recreation on. The Park District took part in this and they wanted to do a, an active recreation thing on Dixie off of Winfield Drive. The neighbors came out of the woodwork. And I mean, there were some very creative, very spirited things about, don't you touch this. So there, there's, that's all there. That means it's right in the, it's in the...
And that's, so I think, I, where I've been here, I wrote my thesis, but I think the idea is, for example, when questions are raised about whether the funding issue, right, that we've talked about is, why is it, hey, semi-dis, hey, semi-disident, you know, some of these things are, so it's, you know, one, it's to make my life easier, but also, right, there's, I mean, it's a cost thing. So they have to go back and reconstruct those things and figure it out. And, and I mean, that was, you know, I think the other idea is to is, you know, let, let the task force catch the heat, right?
Oh, yeah. There's that too.
So I don't blame you for not wanting to share.
The FDNA people, most of them know all this stuff. George was on the, on the board. He was, he was a board member for eight years. Paul Lauer was on the board. And so lots of people out there have that expertise. And so, and if they don't, you know, I mean, I can just, should be an email, an ask man, tell them. You know, it just, I mean, I... Task force gives chance to the people.
Yeah, right. You could have, you could make them present at the task force and like, I mean, you could have this, you know, you could have all sorts of people come forward and then, then it's, you know, then it's defensible. Then no one can ever say, well, you didn't, you know...
Well, and another way to do it is with, you know, with what the, the 708 task force, what they did was they went with Metopia and, you know, and, and did a community survey. The Park District did a community survey maybe 10 years ago. We did ours in 2000, so that was 25 years ago. Park District did it about 10 years ago. And the number one thing, and they did a huge one with, with like elected officials, with other people, with public, with, I mean, they hit multiple groups. It was a massive, massive community survey. And the number one thing that people came back by a huge margin was they wanted walking trails and hiking trails. That was, that was what they wanted.
Yeah, that's another, I think that, those things cost money, which is certainly my decision. The advantage of those things though is where you get back like a statistically significant sample. So that's like an accurate poll about...
You could also have it quite skewed if your questions are not coming from a critical thinking perspective.
No, no, I'm right, but I mean, that's what the point is, they designed something.
Yeah, they designed something so they're not the case.
That answers those questions specifically, right? So that you're not just getting one segment of the community, so that it's not biased, right? There's stats, statisticians. I mean, there's bias in everything inherently, right?
Yeah, there is.
It can be something that the task force recommended, right?
Yeah, but that would be good.
Right, exactly.
Because things like this, $75,000 and we don't know if that is going to fix a problem. It's going to, how much will it cost us down the road in our administration to maintain? All of those questions can be answered if there is something for $75,000 or $446 without knowing what is the maintenance cost overall? And how much does it help you? Or if you didn't attend to it right now, how much does that, you know, um, how bad... Or the long-term cost. Yeah. So those, like, we are going to take the fall for that because we're, I mean, especially when we're not that, you know, educated on the, the open space matters and... It just kind of feels like you're just trying to shift. The thing about it, Chivali, is that all those questions become answered when you do the grant. No, no, but if the, the task force took the heat for that, we're not, they're going to suggest, they're going to do the research, come back and suggest, okay, we, this is good to go. But there's no time for that.
And that's what, so, and I think you, I think, Beau, I think we can have our KPD2 here. Because I think there's no cost to applying for the grant.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it could be something that's evaluated and I think part of the idea...
But they're going to want a guarantee, right? That the township will provide the money. Grants are not guaranteed.
Well, so, but that's only if we're, if they award us the grant.
To apply, there is nothing, all right, definitely.
I mean, I can look, I can, I'll look at it, so I'd say it's a special meeting.
Okay. That'll be fine. I'm sure I'll get it. But, but yeah, I, I, but I think, I think if that's the case, we should vote now and ask, and ask FDNA to move forward with the... But we can't vote. It's not the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. That's the problem.
But I think, but they did apply, right? I mean, there's no, there's, there's no action that needs to be taken.
Okay.
The application, they could submit, yeah. The, the action comes when the decision point happens about, hey, we were awarded this, you know, we want to do this.
Do we want to accept it? Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Trustee.
And, and, and that, and if it comes back and it's like, really way too much money, we can go, gee, we're sorry, we can't do that.
So that you don't have to, I'll say, coming back.
Okay, sounds good.
Can I ask a quick task force question?
Yes.
So next meeting when we vote on the task force, can we change the bylaws at all?
Yeah. Yeah, you can change, yeah, but yeah, it's literally up for discussion, I think that's the idea. And I'll say that, you know, the idea... And I'll say that, you know, the idea was, it's, I think the duration of it is like a year, it can be extended, right? So it's to kind of slow things down, things take.
I just don't like the narrative that we're like putting them in the hot seat, like, taking the responsibility off the trustees and thinking that that's an appropriate thing to put the heat on somebody else. I just don't like.
You could, to, to put the work on somebody else.
No, the, the word was the heat, the, the term was used, heat, on somebody else.
I said, let them take the heat, then.
I don't like that.
But the idea is to do the work, right? I mean, otherwise, otherwise, you know, you gotta hire staff to do the work, or pay me to do it, which I'm happy to do.
So, I take the heat.
Are you meaning the work or blame if it goes wrong?
The blame, too, that's exactly what they're trying to do.
Yeah, right, well, and I think the other point is, when you, you know, task forces, right, are ruthless, they have no power to do anything, so they go out and they, I mean, they study. Right, and they get information, and then they come back with recommendations, so. You know, if there's a recommendation that you don't like, you say, well, you know, we don't want to do that, it's a war. But you want to make sure that it's a, you know, that's why, if someone, you know, you would have on there, so they're not going back to something crazy, you have to say no. Because that's really the key.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we can, I wouldn't mind being on the task force, I don't want to lead it. I wouldn't mind being on it, either being on it or not being on it, whatever, whatever's decided. But I, what I want to know, I want the parameters, how many people are we talking about? Where are they going to come from? You know, who's going to be on it? You know, where are we getting, you know, are, are we gonna, I mean, are we going to solicit Chris Kemp? Who hates open space or something like that, you know?
That's where the bylaws come in, right? Where we talk about it next meeting to decide who picks these people, how many people, right?
What qualities these people have? Yeah. Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion is made by trustee Drake, and second is by trustee Day. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, any abstentions? I comment, we are adjourned at 9:26.